Some of the guys down in our, in our.
These guys will break their back right now, Dave.
It's not that heavy. I held it personally. And so we, we asked the guys to slap a piece of plexiglass on it and they had some framing material. And we're gonna hang that out front. We got a big giant wall that I think as people come into our, to the city hall here and they take a look at what we're doing in the next year, they'd have an opportunity to at least see what you, you were talking about.
During the meeting, they're just gonna stand there and hold.
But anyway, Mayor, I just wanted to share that with you.
That's very nice of you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stiles, does that violate our billboard ordinance?
I also, I wanna, I wanna acknowledge Julie Hill.
That's what I wanted to do.
She's right behind here.
Yeah, yeah.
And our communications chief, she, she came up with this idea and convinced you and I appreciate you letting us follow through on that.
I'm glad we did it. It turned out to be a great move.
Well, thanks, guys, for bringing that in.
Thank you, Julie, very much. All right, let's get on with the city manager's briefing. Thalia Creek Greenway there, Dave?
Okay, um, we, we, we've been working on the Thalia Greenway for a while. It's, it's a unique environmental project, public access, public amenity in the town center area of our city. We've, we've obtained two, two grants, one in possession and one that you have on your agenda today to accept the million dollar grant. But we've had to orchestrate some changes to where it's going and how we're going about it. And we've gotten some great cooperation from the state, allowing us to consolidate dollars and bring a larger next phase together. And so I've asked our, our transportation administrator, Phil Pullin, to brief this project so that you'll have a better understanding of what you're approving in the ordinances today.
Phil, we're glad to have you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Dave has asked me to present the Thalia Creek Greenway project. This is a Parks and Rec project. They're the owner. Wayne Wilcox is here today with Parks and Rec and Public Works is managing the project. And as Dave said, we got two grants, a $640,000 grant from federal money, TAP, Transportation Alternatives Program. And we also, like he said, on the agenda today, we secured another million dollars y'all have on your agenda today to approve that for another phase that I will talk about. So what's the history, some history of the Thalia Creek Greenway? Here, some milestones I'm showing. It dates back to 1973 when the council established CBD zoning. 1991 with the development of the Town Center Master Plan. 2007, Parks and Rec completed the Thalia Creek Greenway Master Plan, which I'm gonna show you in a minute. In 2009, the Pembroke SGA Plan, of course. Now, what is the Thalia Creek Greenway? Here's the 2007 Master Plan. And I'm sorry, the clicker doesn't work. I mean, the pointer, so I have to use this just to give you a, some orientation. Independence Boulevard, Virginia Beach Boulevard, Constitution Drive, Bonnie Road. And you can see the Thalia Creek itself forms about like a T. So the Thalia Creek Greenway runs along the creek from Independence to Constitution up to Virginia Beach Boulevard, parallel to Constitution down to I-264 and possibly one day crosses I-264. Now, what is it? It's a path, asphalt path on grade in some locations, and it's a boardwalk, raised boardwalk in some locations. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about that here. Let's see, we are showing you, we're, today, we're gonna focus pretty much on the piece from Independence Boulevard to Constitution Drive. That's the, that's the imminent piece here that we are designing and building. Phase one of that goes from Constitution West to the edge of this apartment development, Ripley Heat Walls Midtown Apartments. And that piece is built, that piece exists today. You go out there and it is, it is in the ground. People are using it. Phase two goes from where that ended over to this point and then down to Bonnie. That phase is under, under design, almost done, basically done. And phase three ties into phase two here and goes up and over to Independence. That is the phase we got the million dollars on. You guys hope are voting on that today. Let me show you some pictures of phase one that was built. This is, it was built in two segments in 2008 and 2012 by Ripley Heat Wall, the developer. The first segment is 600 linear feet of asphalt trail, eight foot wide. It, it stretches around his apartments. Here's another photo. You can see it goes up to and adjacent to the apartments. And then the second phase, built in 2012, was a raised boardwalk that you see here. And this extended from Constitution Drive to tie back into the asphalt path. Now, this was built by Ripley Heat Wall, but the funds used to build this were leftover funds from the cost participation agreement with the city and Ripley Heat Wall for the Constitution Bridge. So Ripley Heat Wall built it, but we had some funds that we went towards that. Here's another photo. Hopefully, you can see better on your handout, but this is a photo of the boardwalk spanning the Thalia Creek. A good, good project. So that was phase one. Now we are into phase two. And like I say, we have that designed. We got $640,000 in a grant to build that. And we have to expend it, and I mean, we have to build something by fall of this year. We ran into a roadblock, though. On phase two, phase two here, this little piece here that is on Midtown Apartments or Ripley Heat Walls parcel, we were unable to secure that acquisition. So since it was under a time constraint, we developed a strategy to break it out into two phases, phase two A and phase two B. Phase two A is this short piece here. Phase two B is, is, is the remaining piece there that we're unable to build because we can't get that acquisition. We asked VDOT. VDOT said yes, they would let us put the funding that we got on that, the remaining piece of, that's not being used for phase two A to put on three. And I'll show you how that funding works here in a minute, so that's gonna work out. So what will it look like? Phase two A will be built. That's this piece here, phase three. And you will have a usable piece for the citizens to walk, bike, trail. And we think that is, it wasn't our original plan, but we think that's still a good, a good piece. Phase one exists that way. Now it's usable. People can walk from Constitution and back. We will just have to build this other piece when we get acquisition secured from Ripley Heat Wall. So the funding, how's the funding work? The, this top table shows phases two and three as exist today, $640,000 of PAC funds we got for phase two, a million dollars that we got for phase three. City match, other local funds we're having to contribute, and that's the $4 million for those two projects. Down here, the key point is, now that we're breaking it out, VDOT is allowing us to use that $640,000 to build the two A piece and then put the remainder, $534,000, on the phase three. So that's less city money that we have to contribute. This million dollars is the, is the grant that we're gonna, y'all are voting on today. So, so we have less local money that we have to put on and we'll just have to figure out and maybe apply for this to be phased in a, in a future and hopefully, we can resolve the acquisition issue with Ripley Heat Wall. Scheduled to build two A and three, two A, we are going to construction. It's a small piece. It's about 200 feet of asphalt path, so we'll build that this spring. And that will satisfy the grant. Will be done by, will start this spring. Will be done by August. And the phase three that you're voting on today, that's, that's a larger undertaking. We anticipate going to construction in October of 18 and be done in October of 19. So that was just a quick rundown of the Thalia Creek Greenway. Any questions or discussion? I'll be more than happy, or Wayne will be more than happy to.
Questions or comments, Councilmembers?
Barbara? Yeah, I guess with the Open Space Committee and the other various committees that I've been on, we've been talking about this for a long time, is we could see these parts coming through. And I think it's gonna be a great surprise to a lot of folks that, you know, we've got this nice blue way in there and then we'll have the walking trails along the Thomas. Congratulations to the staff.
Absolutely. And thanks for also being creative and not being knocked down because we couldn't get one part done, you know?
We get it.
Huh? Good strategy. Yes, sir.
When Lois says it, you know it's gonna happen.
I know the school system is starting to look, though it's just long-term look at this point, on the other side with the rebuilding of the high school. I just hope, do they get this kind of input so they know what we're doing on our side? So as we're looking, 'cause that is, those two elementary, that high school and elementary school are the only schools I know that are on the Lynn Haven River with significant waterfront.
Princess Anne High School across, is that, yes, sir?
Thalia Elementary on the other side.
Right. And, and just so you know, Councilman, the, the elementary school actually goes down to the dredge material transfer site and does their biology projects right off the structure that you all built in support of the Western Branch.
Right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Great, great, great. Okay, pending planning items. Let's see how Barry does today.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Wayne.
I remember doing the sketches.
Oh, you got time. We are not rushed for anything.
I remember doing the sketches for that project in 1995. I'm glad somebody can finally get it built.
Barry, we're glad to have you.
All right. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I have the, some of these are.
I didn't mean to rush you. I should've let you know that Shannon Kane is gonna be running late.
Okay.
And she had a business thing she couldn't get out of, so I apologize for just bringing that to you now, but carry on, Barry.
All right. We have the, the items for March 1st and March 15th. Some of these you've actually seen before. They seem to keep coming back over and over again. So, go ahead. All right. So for March 1st, we have eight items. All of them were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and the planning staff. The first one is a, well, I'll go through them each individually, but they are a combination of, of car repair, kennels seem to be popular this week, street closures, there is one firearm sale and open air market as well as a conditional use, bulk storage items. The Bayside District, we have a conditional use for a kennel. It's the Planning Commission voted to recommend. The applicant has four dogs. They are only asking for one additional dog. They have a very large lot. It's over an acre. They have had no complaints and we recommend approval. Conditional use permit for mobile truck repair. It is in Bayside District. It is in the Burton Station SGA. It is consistent with the Burton Station SGA Plan. And it is in an area that is industrial. It fits in with everything around it. Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve it. The subject site is zoned for the use. All, all repairs will take place in the building. The business only employs one person. In the Beach District, we have two of these are street closures in Croatan, which most of you are probably familiar. There is a alley existing in the, many of the properties, behind the properties. Many of them have been closed. And these are applications to close two of them in that area. The first one for Charles and Bonnie Doman and the second one for Amy R. Schlegel. If you look on that last picture, you'll notice the ones to the south have already been closed. They have, they have all kinds of things in the right of way. People use it. So it's a, it's an appropriate use. The Public Works Real Estate Department determines the value after this approval and determines the value to charge the adjacent property owners.
Barry?
Yeah.
Can you get, no time, just in the future, what the last price per square foot was charged from the last?
Sure. Be glad to. And the filing off with the funds, the funds generate, go into a specific account for beach access in the Croatan neighborhood. Virginia Beach Development Corporation, this is a conditional use permit in the Kempsville District, in the Lake Edwards area for a unusual use, an assembly use in, in the Lake, Lake, Lake Taylor? No, Lake Edwards. Lake Edwards condominiums. I'm always saying Lake Taylor. I knew it was Lake something. But, so it's for a use of an events, including mentorings, spoken words. The Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation would provide the volunteers, would provide the service, would provide a way for youth as well as adults to have various types of educational opportunities. There were, there were discussion. There was opposition. I believe we addressed the opposition due to the types of operational conditions. In addition, Councilwoman Dr. Ross Hammond has brought forward a suggestion, the conditions from the Planning Commission were until 7:00 PM, and she has asked that that be till 6:00 PM. We have notified the applicant. We have not heard back from the applicant yet whether they would be in support. I am sure we will have that information by the time this comes before council.
Okay. And before you go further just on that, so the council will know, this is gonna be like a pilot program that they wanna bring forth, having where youth can be. And the opposition is in a residential, so they happen to have something like this right in one of the townhomes. Because they wanted to know why can't they go to Williams Farm or somewhere that's appropriate? But they felt some of them don't have enough resources to even go over to Williams Farms. So they wanna try this out. And of course, you can see there's limits, only maybe 10 and then two volunteers soon. They're gonna have background checks and all of that on there, but they had it till seven and I thought that's getting into darkness time. And for in the community, we don't want to have anything else happen, so this will be a conditional use and pilot. And if it doesn't work or any problems begin to happen, we can have that closed down. But this is what they wanna do. So I'm suggesting six o'clock instead of seven.
They're gonna have like computers and things like that to work on or homework stations?
Well, I think they're gonna have computers. They're gonna have, where adults are gonna come and meet like a little support group as well. But the residents were saying this is built for a regular home. There's bedrooms upstairs, there's this and different things could happen. So at least they're suggesting having two volunteers at all times there. So that's what we've had, opposition from some of the residents on that and support. So I thought to share with you and get your feedback on something like that, if you're comfortable.
Will we get the verbatim since there's opposition?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Jim?
Virginia Beach Development, is this community, PBCT, okay.
Right.
Left community offer there. That's a different entity.
All right.
Yeah, it's that and the Second Act. I think Second Act is part of this.
Right. Well, I, I have a number of concerns about, about doing this in a, in a neighborhood. And, and I'd like to see information about the impact on this with respect to building code specifically. If you've got basically an assembly use or commercial type use next to residential, I mean, are we gonna do anything in terms of fire separation assemblies? Are you gonna allow, 'cause I noticed that they're converting one of the bathrooms to an ADA bathroom.
Right.
Down there, which leads me to believe they're treating this as a, as a commercial, commercial property. I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned about the, the use of the kitchen, you know, with, there, there's just a lot there that makes me very nervous about this, so.
That was a good comment.
I didn't know till I started getting these calls. And so then I started asking a little bit more because we don't want something, generate something that may cause a problem. Do they feel that they have adequate staff? They're gonna have them trained. And we even ask about the parking because she says that they're gonna be either bike or walk. But if they're gonna be an adult support group, that means there may be cars as well. So all of these, I didn't know if you were ready to move this forward or whether we should defer until we really get these land space that you were mentioning in.
We're gonna trust your judgment as you work through it with them.
Okay.
You know, if you, if you see the community gets behind it, that would be our recommend, my recommendation for you to bring it back at that point.
Right. Just to cover, like you mentioned, the ADA and so forth, to make sure.
And we'll follow up with permits and inspections regarding building code.
When you come back, Barry, would you bring back some information, how we would be assured that there would be adult volunteers there at all times?
Sure.
When it's open, because I think that's the key to it being a success.
I, I totally agree with you. I think it's making sure that we have a professional.
Professional, because, you know, some could be downstairs and others upstairs. You know, this is what they're looking at and youth are youth.
It's a good idea. It's just that you can't have all those kids in there.
That's it.
Without adult supervision, 'cause there's gonna be a problem sooner or later if you do.
This is part, this is Kimsland Bayside Inn in this area?
This is Kempsville Inn. Is it both of us?
I don't know.
Well, Lake Edwards.
On the Lake Edwards side.
Lake Edwards is Kempsville.
Yeah, it's Kempsville.
All right. But a lot of merit to what's going on here.
But I would also, I would like to get the verbatim as well that John asked about because I'd really like to see what the opposition is.
Well, and, and when you read the verbatim, you'll see that I personally guaranteed that I would monitor the activities over the next year and report back to the Planning Commission. So I will do the same for you, too.
So which room is yours?
Because typically there, unless there's complaints, there's not typically monitoring that activity.
All right. What we got next?
All right. Robert J. Ianucci, Lynn Haven District, conditional use permit for a home occupation. It's firearm sales at Willowood Lane. It's in the Lynn Haven District. After a lot of discussion, the Planning Commission did vote 11-0 to recommend. The applicant wishes to consult and sell custom order firearms. The sales will be by appointment only. The firearms are made either in New Hampshire or Connecticut, and then they are shipped down on a, you know, as an individual basis. They are delivered by a commercial firm. And a condition in the conditional use permit is that there has to be somebody there to sign for and accept the firearms so that it's not sitting on the porch. The applicant has to obtain the federal firearms license. All firearms will be stored in a safe prior to sale. There's no inventory of firearms to be kept on the site, other than the, the individual firearms that are, that are delivered for sale. In addition, the City of Virginia Police Department and Prime Prevention Office will conduct an onsite assessment of the property. Any questions?
Questions? Move on?
All right. McDonald Gardens Center is a, is in Lynn Haven District. You may have seen this at the intersection of Kings Grant, Kings Grant Road and Virginia Beach Boulevard. It has been in operation one year as a, as a peddler's permit, as a pilot program. We have had no complaints. And this, then they come back with requests for conditional use permit. They would ask for a 7,000 square foot open air market. The temporary improvements include shade canopies, checkout kiosks, split rail fence. As you can see, as it was existing, it's an attractive, well-defined site. And when, at the end of the season, all merchandise improvements are removed from the property. So Planning Commission supported this as a recommended conditional use permit. And the last one for, no, it's not the last one, for, for the first, Headgear Two LLC and GHS LLC, a lot of, a lot of letters there. Conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard. It is in a location of a, of industrial uses. It is buffered, you see in the bottom, it is buffered by industrial uses on one side and a significant existing vegetated buffer on the other side. The storage yard would contain earth-moving equipment. You see the picture now because it is being used now for a bulk storage yard. So this is after the fact to get in compliance. It will be entirely enclosed with a chain link fence. And it'll be, it is, as I said, it is screened from view either by existing vegetation or other developments. So it's not clearly open to your view and is an appropriate use for that location. Okay, moving right along. March 15th, we only have two items. And they are the Colfer Farm Stand in Lynn Haven District and another kennel. The Colfer Farm Stand, most of you are familiar with. It is at the site of the Stonies Farm Stand, which has been there for about 20 years. And it is a unique situation in that it is permitted to not have the level of retail improvements, parking and other things, based on the fact that it's actually a farming operation. So that's how we have interpreted the code and that's how it's been interpreted in the past. So if this could not exist in this form unless there wasn't all that farming going on around it. So the proposed improvements, it is significant, it is somewhat larger. The existing is 1,000 square feet. It would go to 3,500 square feet. And it would have bathrooms. Current facility has, I think, porta-potties. And they will be ADA compliant, as well as there will be the required number of parking spaces that will be compliant with a barrier-free walkway. The city, the site will be required to connect the city and water, water and sewer, which is available. Parking will remain crushed shells and the majority of the site is, will be cultivated. Any questions? And the last one for that date is a Margaret Bain, is a Princess Anne District conditional use for residential kennel. It was approved by the planning, supported for recommendation by the Planning Commission. The applicant owns five dogs. They had requested 20. The staff and Planning Commission came back and recommended eight dogs and the, the applicant agreed to a total of eight. So the owners take care, what do you call it? They, they.
Foster.
Foster. They foster dogs. They take dogs in, they foster them. And there are several dog houses. It's a fairly rural area. We have received letters of support and opposition. The letters of support were directly adjacent to the property. The letters of opposition were a few houses away. So we think the compromise of eight, eight dogs on this site is, is appropriate and recommend approval. That's it.
Any questions, Barry? Hearing none?
All right.
We'll move on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
City council comments, please? Yes, ma'am?
Something really exciting to share. I went to the Health Service Advisory Board's meeting and there was a Dr. Throckmorton. He's a dentist that came to address the board. And he's with the Group of Atlantic Dental Care. And they're doing something called Missions of Mercy. And it's the first time that they've done Virginia Beach in years. They've done it in other communities. And it's going to be at Green Run High School on April 30th. And it's going to be free dental clinic for a day where they hope to provide services to 500 patients. And these are people who have no insurance and may be underemployed. They're gonna have Spanish translators on site. They're gonna open up at 6:30 in the morning. And they're gonna bring in trucks with, for the x-rays. Oh, thank you. With the x-rays and just, and they'll even make dentures for people who don't have them. I think it's pretty exciting. And Centerra gave them a $50,000 grant to do this. Because it's, they've gotta bring in a lot of equipment. It's gonna be a pretty big cost to it. And there were some other grants that were provided to them, but.
Thanks for letting us know that's great news.
April 30th, I think that's, and they're not going to advertise it. They think that they'll get plenty of patients without advertising, but I wanted the council to know because I thought this was pretty special.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, sir?
We had, I was with Lynn Haven River for their reception last week. And there they announced that, and I think everybody got the email, that they opened up 132 new acres in the Lynn Haven River to oyster shell fishing. So, which is, you know, pretty remarkable improvement over, over what they've had in years past. So, good stuff.
Best oyster in the world.
It is. Very good. We love them.
We'll move on to, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I have one quick.
I would never pass over you, sir.
One quick thing. During the retreat, I mentioned the potential ordinance about prohibiting the retail sale of kittens and puppies from puppy mills. Been working with Mark and his team and we have found something in the state code that will allow us to write an or, would, in theory, allow us to write an ordinance. I'm working with Mark right now in a group of pet activists to fine tune it and then I hope to present it at the next workshop for all of your review. And I would really love it if any of you who wanted to sign on as code patrons would.
That was great.
I've noticed a number of city documents have been referencing partial results or priorities coming out of the master transportation study that Barbara has often talked about that ODU is doing. And so I, but I've seen it being coming out in city documents, but I know it hasn't been here. So I would appreciate, since everyone else has seen it, maybe or what's going on there, that, I know it's scheduled to come to us in March, but whatever it is that the city has been relying upon, that they've been sharing, I've seen the development community mention one of their results. I've seen it in some other. mentioned in one of their results, I've seen it in some other documents, where they talk about the preliminary results of roadways and assessments. I would just like to get whatever that is, and, so I can just be informed with the public as those people are. And I would hope that when it comes forward, are we gonna be able to interactively show it's, is this just, you know, background algorithms that are being used, and we're just gonna see paper, paper tables? Or is this actually a graphical, interactive thing, like we once saw there at the intersection of the Boulevard Independence, where you can actually see the flow? I'm just, is it a dynamic, or is it just gonna be paper tables?
I haven't seen the presentation, Councilman, but I'm sure they'll, they'll, they'll buffer excerpts from the, from the application and do demonstrations up here, so you see the visuals that would go along with it.
And is the model sensitive to that sensitivity analysis can be done? Or does that, from a, from a menu application, like an application, or does it really require recoding to say, what if I change this by 5%? Or what if I show this flow path or increase this volume here as the inner? I'm just curious just how dynamic that is, because I think often policymakers like to say, well, this is it, but if we make a change, can we see the result of that change? Because that's the kind of stuff, you know, I'm familiar with, but.
Those are the model that works.
But it should, but also models are not required, rather than you have a parameter value, some models, if they're not done appropriately, how they work, require you to go, actually you have to re-go in and, not just off an app and change the parameter value, but someone has to go in and do the coding to make them work.
You're hitting me on that. I thought you just did it in.
Well, that should be how it is. That's why I'm asking, is that what we have?
I'll make sure they address that, Councilman. I personally have not played with the model.
Thank you.
But we have invested in an engineer out of ODU, young student, that will be our operator of that application, once we are in possession of it.
And if we have to go there or wherever they are to see that, that would be preferred to seeing a static view, if their facility has the appropriate.
They're at VMAS in Suffolk.
Computational power, such that we get the full benefit of what we bought, that would be very helpful, I think.
All right. Other comments? All right. We'll now move on to the vision of the Vice Mayor for the agenda review.
Yeah, the vision. All right.
A great vision.
Under ordinance, is there anything, under ordinance, is anybody has a problem with? All right. If not, we'll move to planning. First item, Mark and Cynthia Sum, Beach District. Mr. Earn?
I've heard no issues with that, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Item two, Oceanfront Investments. I have the mayor and Mr. Earn abstaining. Is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Wood, would you like to comment on that?
I'm supportive of it. I haven't heard anything on it. I'm voting no, and I will have extended remarks on that item.
All right. Item three, Michael Benetti, Princess Anne. The mayor's abstaining on that. Ms. Henley?
I've heard no opposition.
Item four, William H. Johnson, Princess Anne District. Ms. Henley?
Same. I've not had any, that's from folks.
Item five, Discount Tires of Virginia Inc. and Lot Cilis LLC, Princess Anne. Ms. Henley?
This one's block instead of brick, which the next one is, but I guess the, I think the applicant asked for that, or the owner, so we'll go with it.
You're okay, then?
Yes.
All right. Item six, Discount Tires of Virginia and Holland Century Associates, Rose Hall.
I'm fine with that.
All right. Item seven, Take Five Oil Change LLC, Lynn Plaza Investments, Rose Hall.
That's fine, too.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
I do need to go back to the Sister City one, that was the ordinance, I believe. Anyway, I'll be abstaining on that.
Yeah, I've got you down to abstain. I'm sorry.
Very much. Good work there, Mr. Jones. You're my favorite Vice Mayor today.
He's the only one.
Notice they lemoned it today.
I did say today. That's always a subject, you know? Then Cheryl Entertain, a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes, publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property or for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3. Princess Anne, Princess Anne. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration of or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointments, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, councils, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a say.
Tag it.
Call the roll, please.